No absent with regrets. Any declarations of conflict of interest right now, or you can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item? Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? Go ahead, deputy.
Uh, maybe to the C A O, your worship, is there something that we have to do tonight from a previous discussion in camera? Or? We're good? Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Nobody else? Go ahead there, councillor Steve.
Uh, could we put, uh, support for seniors for voting?
Yep, we'll put that under twelve A. I'm just gonna put seniors. We'll know it's yours when you come to it. Okay? Any other additions, folks? We're good? Okay? Oh, yes. Um, is that the public sewer system, the discharge on the public sewer? Or the Bicycle Nova Scotia? Okay, so I'll put that under B. I'll put bicycle. We got that. We got that. Okay? Anything else? Moved by Deputy Mayor. Second by councillor Don. Questions called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. By the way, welcome back to our first in-person meeting, six feet apart, took up half the room. So, and thank you, C A O and, and, and our communications person and everybody else, and Lindsay that put this together, because I know it took some work. Yeah, good stuff. Okay, approval of minutes. Town Council, August thirteenth. Councillor Wade and Deputy Mayor. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And Committee of the Whole, August twenty-sixth, please. Moved by councillor Don, second by councillor Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, business arising. Destruction of documents by law. So, we're at the second reading, so what I'm looking for is a motion to approve the second reading. There's no public, because it's not Land use. Go ahead councillor Cliff.
So, your worship, gee, it was about two weeks ago, Roy Snickerson, or Nixon, dropped me off at the, dropped off in my house, a copy of the, of a booklet for nineteen twenty-four, all the town minutes, including Water Committee and all the rest. And when I looked at this thing, I'm saying, does that mean, I don't even know if we'll keep all that, but I do. Well, we're not talking about destroying something of historical value like that?
Go ahead, C A O.
So, your worship, this, uh, this documents that we typically destroy through, through this policy would be, um, documents related to minor financial transactions after like seven years or so. Um, yeah, I mean, we, we don't destroy anything of any, of any historic value. In fact, we have bound copies of all the old minute books going all the way back. Um, and any deeds, contracts, anything like that, of course, we keep. This is only stuff that takes up space, and frankly, we haven't been doing a lot of document destruction since a lot of things have gone electronic. Uh, we might destroy hard copies, but the, the actual document still exists as, as electronic document, and storage there is, doesn't take up a lot of room and, and is, is, allows us to keep a lot of information around for historical purposes and for searching background on information without keeping cabinets and cabinets. I think, uh, I found something for Wade, uh, earlier today, uh, that was, uh, what, eight, nine years old? And, uh, was, was a few seconds of fine on the electronic copy, yeah.
You're welcome. Uh, you're late. That's okay. Okay, so we are looking for that motion. I had the motion and the seconder. Lindsay, you have that, right? Oh, okay, councillor Don and councillor Jim? Questions called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. Um, business arising, feeding wild animals by law. This is the second reading. Same thing, I'm looking for a motion to approve. We do have, um, an email that was sent to, um, to us from a gentleman. I'm not sure if you had time to read that, but, uh, I do have a couple of questions on this, so go ahead councillor Wade.
All right, I have a couple of questions as well. First off, I, I mentioned before about whether this is enforceable at all, uh, which to me is fairly important, although I suppose in a representative way, it's kind of, uh, it's, it's good. And I certainly have been one of the loud voices about trying to take care of the deer population. But the big question that I keep getting is, it's a little bit of confusion, and it makes perfect sense to me, because, you know, I'm thinking about this wild animals by law in one certain way, and that way is with deer. No feeding the deer. Um, but all the questions I'm getting relates to birds and, and ducks and all of that. And I need some clarity before I'm ready to support that, because, I mean, it seems a little ridiculous to be banning bird feeders, for example. And so that needs to be clear in that bylaw. And, uh, so I need a little bit more clarity before I'm prepared to move any further. Just my comment.
Do you want me to, go, okay, go ahead, C A O.
Your worship, when it comes to enforcement of the bylaw, uh, I would, the way I would describe it is that we will, we'll be active on nuisance issues. And so we know, uh, recently deer are a nuisance and a danger, and something that we should be active on when, you know, people are putting out piles of carrots at the end of their driveway and that. We should have our bylaw enforcement officers stop by and advise them, give them a warning first, make sure they're aware this isn't, isn't in the public interest. Um, and, uh, and go from there. As far as your, your general birds, unless, unless the feeding of those birds was to the extent that they became a nuisance to the neighbor, because there were so many birds and, and so much, um, mess or whatever as a result, uh, unless it was a complaint, I don't see us getting, uh, on people for feeding birds. We did have an issue, and I think it's probably twenty-five years ago or so, where the town put up signs down along, uh, uh, Sealed Landers Park, because there were so many people down there feeding ducks, and it was, uh, it was becoming a nuisance. And so, a duck is a bird. So, I'm not gonna say we're never gonna enforce, uh, the bylaw or be active on the bylaw as it relates to birds, because it can be a nuisance. Uh, somebody was feeding raccoons, we would be active on it, because it's likely to be a nuisance. And, and in town, where people live close together, and what you do on your property can affect what I'm able to, how I'm enabled to enjoy my property, uh, we're gonna get calls from time to time. And I think having this bylaw allows us at least to, to have a basis to send a bylaw officer to have a discussion, to, to warn somebody, and hopefully gain compliance. By passing a bylaw of this nature, you, you send a message to the community about what is expected, and in only the worst, most, uh, uh, adversarial situations would I ever imagine that we would be trying to write a ticket to somebody for, for feeding animals. I think people who, I hope people who care about animals will understand that, that when it becomes a point that's a nuisance to their neighbors, that they'll choose their neighbor's interests over, over the, uh, the hobby or the habit of, of feeding wild animals.
Wow, I really like that. Go ahead councillor deputy.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. We've tried to mitigate deer coming into town. We've done a lot of things with Todd, Mew's our parks person, on how they plant, how they do other things. Um, I know Jim is councillor McLeod to see people feeding deer just on the, the other side of Prospect Street or just on the outskirts, and we know it's a problem. But, do you know that they have a plebiscite in Truro this year about the culling of the deer population in the town of Truro? That's gonna be, that's a public plebiscite this year. So, um, there's extremes to this, right? And we know that there's a problem, we know that they carry disease, we know that they destroy property, and we know they're a danger to traffic and pedestrians. So, um, we have to do everything we can to mitigate it until it comes to this other point. But we've, we've been doing, we've had Natural Resources in, at communities in Bloom, we've had meeting at the municipal building with Natural Resources, and the other municipal council, we had Natural Resources in here a couple of times, and we're not the only place in Nova Scotia that has this. And I just wonder, um, C A O, do you know, uh, is there other municipalities or other towns that have the same bylaw in place, do you know? Or is that a good question?
Yeah, um, I'm trying to recall whether we, whether we borrowed this from, uh, New Glasgow or from Truro, but, but certainly there are a couple examples. And you mentioned Truro already, they're kind of, uh, dealing with, uh, an extreme kind of situation, and to a large extent, because they have a very large natural park right within the town limits, which, uh, they have a large, large deer population there, and, uh, it's, it's, it's a, it's a problem. So, yeah, there are other towns that are doing this, and, um, uh, speaking to my colleague in Truro, I know that they have, they have had to levy, levy fines for feeding the deer in their community. Um, you know, I'm hopeful that, that it wouldn't come to that in our community, that by sending the message and communicating it, and, and maybe explaining the issues that come with having, having deer, uh, around a populated area, that people will, uh, do the right thing.
Thank you. Councillor Cliff?
Your worship, uh, people getting worked up about birds, but been a while since I took my grade ten biology, but a bird isn't an animal. Hello? Don't forget about the bird part. You're dealing with wild animals, undomesticated animals. I'm an amateur lawyer, taboo. Doc, uh, who was my, my teacher? Repito. Somebody else remembers. No, seriously, I think Deputy Mayor's right on this thing. We ought to do something, and I don't think we're gonna be out there fining people so much as, if you had a really, uh, you had a complaint that was legit, and, uh, your bylaw officer will go out and have a conversation with the person, and hopefully they would respond and not do it. And if they kept it up, maybe you do get a fine, but, anyway, that's all I have to say.
Good. You two put your lights off there. Thank you. And I have councillor Wade.
One more time. Um, I just, I wanna read for, just to put into the record, um, the actual part of it in which it says how it works. So, you know, again, people here, feeding wild animals, we're putting a bylaw against it, which means, you know, anytime anybody feeds anything, they're gonna get arrested or something. But it actually says in paragraph three point oh, "No person shall feed one or more wild animals in any place in such a manner or to such an extent that doing so causes or may cause an unreasonable interference with another person's use and enjoyment of his or her property or of a public place." So, in other words, nuisance. So it has to be a complaint in order for anything to go into effect, right? We're not gonna have, we're not gonna have armed police checking to see if you're feeding the deer or anything like that. It's a nuisance bylaw. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I think it is too. Councillor Jim?
Couple, uh, one question, or a couple of questions. Four point zero. Did we get a thousand dollars? Did that come from another bylaw, Jeff? And, uh, generally speaking, people, I'm probably gonna get a complaint more than staff are gonna get a complaint about, uh, deer, uh, being fed by neighbors. And, uh, so I, and I've had that under, I probably have had about ten complaints on my walkabout over the past year or so. And, and I, my good friend has written a note tonight, or today, which I read earlier, and, uh, he's gone to great lengths to, to change his, the way he, he looks after his flock. And, uh, so, you know, I still, I'm gonna support the bylaw, the motion to approve, but, uh, it's, it's, like, like it's been said, it's hard to, it's hard to enforce. And, uh, so I'm, but generally, I'm okay with the bylaw. Just wonder about the thousand dollars, that's a, that's a big deal, uh, from my point of view.
Yeah, from anywhere between fifty and a thousand, but it's, you know, um, okay, deputy?
Uh, question for the C A O. Uh, we know that the town of Truro is putting in a plebiscite. When is the deadline? If, I'm not talking about putting this on, I'm not saying it, I'm not talking about it, but if there was a plebiscite issue, what's the deadline? Like, what would the returning officer, do we have to pass a motion here? Council, obviously we do, and what would the returning officer need?
Uh, your worship, I don't know the answer to that. Off the top of my head, I'd have to, I'd have to look into it.
Did we, did we get a mover and a seconder? No? Okay. Moved by the deputy, second by councillor Cliff. Alrighty. Questions called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. New business, sewer discharge bylaw, first reading. So, I am looking for a motion, um, to approve the first reading, and then an ad will go to the public who can write to council. I assume that's the way it works. Oh, sorry, I've got, sorry. Jeff, you're on.
Nope. I was just gonna introduce, your worship, and say that this is part of our, uh, regular routine of asking staff to review bylaws that fall generally within their purview, uh, bring them up to date if there's any amendments, uh, that they would suggest to provide those to us, so we can provide them to council for your consideration. This bylaw was reviewed by, uh, Rob Chatwin. He's the operator of our, uh, chief operator of our wastewater treatment plant. And so, uh, things that he has added, uh, to the bylaw are, are highlighted, and I can just quickly run through generally. Uh, he defines sanitary wipes. Uh, these are the kinds of, uh, wipes, baby wipes, hand wipes, Lysol wipes, that kind of thing. Sanitary paper, which is, which you typically would find in a, in a washroom stall. Um, he, uh, refers to, has a section he's added or proposed under greases and oils around requirements for, uh, folks to properly prevent the discharge of grease and oil into the system. Uh, he has, uh, after defining sanitary wipes, he's suggesting they not be, um, uh, allowed to be, to enter our system. And going through, uh, that is more or less the extent of it. He does talk a bit about standard methods for testing and, uh, testing and sampling of, of discharge. And at one point, he talks about, uh, doing a, a weekly average or an average of, of measurements taken over a period of a week, rather than, uh, a single exceedance being, being a, a fail. So, um, that, in a nutshell, are his recommended changes. This did only come to you, was it yesterday afternoon? So it is late arriving. If you're comfortable, uh, considering first reading, um, I would ask you to consider that, and if it is, uh, too late and you haven't had a chance to consider, uh, then a motion to defer to the next council meeting would be appropriate. And if you have questions about the specifics within, uh, I could have Mr. Chatwin available at the Committee of the Whole, even if you do or do not approve first reading tonight.
Good. Thank you. Councillor Cliff?
Your worship, uh, we did receive that, personally delivered by Lindsay, and, um, I've had an opportunity to review it, it's important stuff. This is only first reading. I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve it for first reading, and, um, we'll go from there.
Good. Second? Second by councillor Jim? Go ahead councillor.
I also have, uh, read it, and my gosh, how are we going to check out Chad's input into the changes? How is he gonna find out that maybe a family is, is putting wipes in the toilet as opposed into the garbage area? You know, and all that sort of thing? I'm just curious about the, not the enforcement, but to find out how, how big a problem it is today, and that's why he's put it in. And, uh, so we're just hoping that, that it will decrease over a period of time.
With the, uh... Sorry, much like the, in some ways, like the, uh, the feeding of wild animals, by being, being clear in the, in the form of a bylaw to the public what is acceptable to discharge into our system, we do have the ability to say this is, this is against the law. It, I've heard, and I haven't heard directly from Rob about our system, but I have heard that other municipal systems have had great challenges with these disposable wipes, and, uh, that he's added this in here. I don't know if we are having an issue or if this is proactive, um, but it, but these have been something that, that I think people are using more now since COVID nineteen, uh, to, to keep surfaces disinfected and so on. So, um, it would be interesting to know if, if we're having a problem, and I could find that out. And as far as enforcement, obviously, we're, we're not gonna be going into people's homes, but I would suspect that if we, if we do have, um, and we do have sometimes, uh, sewer blockages that we, that we have to clear, and sometimes it's grease, and sometimes it's other, other things, um, and if those other things turn out to be, to be wipes, I guess we could call that a teachable moment.
Yeah. Um, would that be something that perhaps our communication officer could promote?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So.
Good.
Thank you, your worship.
Okay, so, uh, there was a motion and a seconder. Questions called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. There was some good stuff in this. Good, really good additions. Yeah, I liked it. Kinda interesting. Uh, telework, work from home policy. So, C A O, go ahead.
So, your worship, um, back in mid-March, uh, we closed Town Hall, and many businesses and offices across the province and across the country and around the world closed as a result of COVID nineteen. Uh, work from home is not something that, uh, that the town, in my time here, have been, um, inclined to support. Uh, we, we have a building, we like people to be here and working. What we learned in COVID, with COVID nineteen, two things, I guess. One is, is that we can do our work at home, uh, many of us. It isn't as comfortable, it isn't as convenient sometimes, but the work does get done. The other thing I have to say that we learned about those that worked from home is that we've got an incredible group of employees. A group of employees that leaned into the situation and did their absolute best, welcomed the town into their homes, uh, into their private spaces to do their, their daily work, and, uh, I, I can say without exception, uh, perform their duties, um, as well and as productively as they would, uh, here in the building. We did, uh, have some situations where, uh, we had to figure it out, um, exactly how we were gonna do it. Uh, Lindsay's in the process right now of leading a project to find out what those areas were, where we kinda had to put duct tape on a gap to, to make things work. We're gonna work on, on solving those issues, so that if there's an outbreak or any other reason why we would have to not have Town Hall open for a day or a week or a month in the future, that we're able to do so smoothly and, and have all of the functions as much as possible performed from home. Part of being able to do that, I believe, and I'm a bit of a convert on this now, is, is keeping the muscle that we developed in working from home for three months, keeping that muscle toned. In other words, keep the equipment that we used close at hand, keep, keep current on, on how we log in and access our files and how we communicate, all of the bits that we, that we learned, uh, over a couple of weeks to get started working from home before. So what I wanted to do with this policy was provide a, a framework, uh, for town employees, uh, working here at Town Hall and, and maybe some other spots where it's possible, to, to allow them with their supervisors to have a work from home agreement, where for one day a month, two days a month, three or four days a month, they have a schedule and they can, they can do their function from home, keep the equipment and, and the practice current. Uh, I learned myself here, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, I, I said, I'm, well, I'm gonna keep the muscle toned, I'm gonna take a day and I'm gonna work from home. I forgot my password to log into the file system, because I hadn't used it in a couple of months. And so, that's what I mean when I say if we, if we enable people, we support people to do this, it will happen easily. And if we forget, if we stop doing it, we're gonna forget how we did it and, and forget where we put the wires or the, or the computer or, or whatever other device that we needed to do our work. So, that's the intent of the policy, to, to give me a framework to work with staff to, to keep us, keep us at the ready, I guess, should we have to, uh, ever close Town Hall for an extended period of time in the future. And frankly, it's, uh, working from home isn't what I expected. Um, you know, I thought that, uh, gee, it'll be more comfortable, it'll be, you know? Well, it's not. You know, sitting on a dining room chair is not nearly as comfortable as sitting on an office chair. Uh, working at, at the table you eat at or, or at a table in your, in your bedroom isn't as comfortable as the, as the nice office you have in, in Town Hall. So, it isn't, uh, it isn't, um, as desirable, but the benefit to the town is, is that it keeps us at a, at a level of readiness and emergency preparedness that, uh, that I think we need to be. I'll stop talking.
No, that was great. Go ahead there, councillor Jim?
I think it's, uh, great, actually, Jeff, and, and I'm amazed that the, it appears to be quite complete. I'm just curious as to if it happens that there's a situation arises that it doesn't fit into what you've presented to us tonight. You should, hopefully you can adapt to the change and, uh, or the necessary change or addition. And, uh, and I know that, uh, the virtual meetings that I participated in from home, I, I learned, can't use my hearing aid, to, my Bluetooth hearing aid to, to have, listen to the audio, because I upset everyone else in the, in the call, but, uh, I know in the next term, it'll be easier to, uh, easier with just one, one, uh, unit for all of us, sort of thing, the same one. Anyway, I think it's great, and thank you very much, and I like the idea of working at home.
Uh, councillor Hood?
So, your worship, uh, I listened carefully to what Jeff had, and I'm, I followed what we've done. Um, I run a business too, with, I don't know, we're close to a dozen employees. When COVID came on, we had some guidance, but not a lot, from Bar Society, but we found other guidance. I know that was, uh, Matt was on the Y Board in Y Canada, had sent some good stuff out. And we took those things and put together a plan, and we, um, we brought Cass in, and we did the work necessary to modify our, uh, computer systems, and we went to a full down, full, full-blown lockdown on the Friday, whatever day it was, or the Monday, and, um, we found that we could do it. Uh, one of our staff members, in fact, was, um, in transit from Toronto. Uh, back home, she'd gone there for a funeral, and, um, our advice to that, uh, staff member was to go straight home, we're keeping everybody on full salary, and to, we'll get her set up at home, and we did the same with the rest of the staff later that week. And she was self-isolated for two weeks, even though that part hadn't come in, uh, at that time. So I think other employers in the town have done similar things, my experience, Greg's, uh, their office would be doing that. And so it's a reality. This thing, uh, in my opinion, is not over yet. Um, I, I, I believe we'll be doing social distancing, washing our hands, and using masks for upwards of a year, could be longer. And we, we, we have to be very careful, in my experience. I left the house without my mask tonight, got halfway here, went back with the car. You know, well, my age, you, you leave the house, the first thing is, forgot my keys, oh, shoot, go back in. Oh, forgot my wallet, back in the house. Oh, forgot my phone, no, it's, holy God, oh, forgot my mask! Seriously. So we worked through it, but I'll tell you, it was harder and it took a lot longer to get the work done. Um, I, you know, I had transactions where we were, the secretary was in Portuguese Cove, um, one of the lawyers working with me was in Abbots Harbor, the client was on Deer Island, and the fisheries office we're dealing with was in St. Stephen. We had another connection. And we had another connection. We got it done. But what would have taken us an hour or two took us a day and a half. And we found that. And so you didn't charge the client any more money. So all businesses are faced with that. You have increased costs and time, right? And you make the time when you're in private business, you just make the time. So it works. But it's not something I want to be doing. Well, I won't have to anyway for the rest of my life. I I was going to say, that's something I want to be doing for the rest of my life. And somebody's going to say, well, who cares? Not be around that much longer. Seriously, businesses, businesses. Right.
You?
Rough around here.
And and I'm going to stop, but I can tell you, I did a court case in St. John last Thursday. And what we have to do and what the hotels are doing is amazing, you know. I'm going to share this one with you. At the Delta in St. John, it was only a hundred bucks for the night. And I went in the room and there was no toilet paper and no Kleenex. Went down, I asked the guy at the front desk, and he said, well, go back up in the room. He said, you'll see a clear plastic bag up there and it's got all that in it. And I went up, here was the here was a box of Kleenex, roll of toilet paper and all your stuff, you know, your. And guess what he told me? Keep it because what we do is, listen to this, we put those together down here, the staff, then they're put in a room and stored for two weeks. Then they go to the rooms. When they're in the rooms, whether they're used or not, they go in the garbage. So I brought home a box of Kleenex with two Kleenexes out of it probably and a roll of toilet paper that I didn't use because I used the one in the room that I didn't see in the first place. I shoved that stuff in my gym bag because, well, I mean, I take a trip to Halifax every Christmas just to get me some some more shoe mints, right? Never mind, that's enough. All right. Really, it's, I echo what the town is doing. But we're doing the same stuff out there in private business and we're making it work. And and we all have to do that, I bet you.
CAO?
Yeah, no, I just want to quickly respond to Jim's Jim's comment. The policy is, in my view, it's a guide. It provides some general parameters. But much like COVID, we cannot anticipate every single situation that will arise. And something will arise that we never thought of in terms of how this might be implemented. And we'll make we'll make make it right. We'll and we'll probably bring, excuse me, bring this one back and update it when we see that there's a couple of things that we need to tweak. But just to get us started and to send a message to to staff that we we want them to think about this and we support them doing this because we think it's it's really in the town's best interest in terms of business continuity. So I want to just acknowledge that Jody Kinney, our HR manager, did the work on this. And she consulted with Noella Martin, who who helps us with some HR matters. And and this has kind of become a big part of of their their work and and she's working from home herself, right? So anyway, that's the answer to your question.
Thank you, CAO. After a while, I didn't I didn't think I'd want to go back home and work again. Ten, at least ten Zoom meetings a day and then, yeah, it's it's been brutal, but it was good. So we've got, did we make the motion? And okay, thank you, Lindsay, I'm glad you're here. We don't have a question because we didn't make the motion. So Counselor Jim's making the motion. Counselor Dawn is seconded. And and thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. Flagpole. I don't didn't write anything up. I know what that was. Okay, I did, I just want to, because it was a while ago. So so out front, we have what we call the mayor's flagpole, which is the Canadian, the Nova Scotia and the Yarmouth flag. And we get an awful lot of requests to put flags up the pole. I have to make that decision because every, there's some that we just can't put up the pole. Let's just leave it, let's just leave it at that. But we also have, we've just done the Pan-African bench. We're doing one for our First Nations. We've got the mental health bench in the in the park. We've got the pride bench here. We had actually had a request because once you start doing these, you get the request. So a request for an Acadian one, which is perfect because that's our community, that's who we are. So so I was just thinking, can we put another flagpole up with three or four spots for flags and just fly them? Is that possible? Should I ask Todd that?
So, your worship, if I hear you correctly, your question is, can we put up another flagpole? If you would like staff to take that question or if council would like staff to take that question, find a location. If I understand correctly, your your intent is about the the flags that were asked to fly that other than Canada, Nova Scotia and the town flag?
Yeah, so we'd have to figure out the logistics of that. But I I personally, we can decide. But personally, I would love to see that Pan-African flag fly all the time. Our First Nations, you know, the the Indigenous peace. You know, there's the Acadian flag because that's our community. And then maybe one that we can just switch out. So we'll take at least four.
If council makes a motion for staff to take that, we'll pass it to Public Works and Parks and have them come back with some ideas.
Perfect, thank you. Counselor Cliff first?
On that point, you should take a look at what we're doing at Killams. We're flying the McMac flag there right now, along with a whole host of others. And it's a very significant flag thing.
Yes.
And it may be that that is where we can accommodate all of us.
That's right on the waterfront. That's where we put the Canada flag.
We've got all those flags up, plus we're doing the McMac, the McMac flag.
Okay.
We're doing that at Shabool River Yacht Club, too.
Yeah, excellent. Then let's then part of that question to staff is to make sure to let us know which ones are flying, which ones we, yeah. Yep, good. Counselor Dawn?
I I think there's all kinds of protocol that comes with flag flying, too. So that's important to read that document, too. And how close you would be to having certain amounts of flags together. Like I know one has to be first and then the other ones. So so it's important to look at that, too. And the location sounds like it would be maybe in a different location or, you know, just a little bit to space it out that Town Hall has the main ones and then somewhere not right together.
Absolutely.
Good. Thanks, thanks, Counselor Dawn. Okay, so moved, seconded by the deputy. Any more discussion on that? Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, FCM representation. So I'm going to say this in a, I think that's taken care of. But I think that's taken care of. Good. We are. E, Mi'kmaq History Month. So there's a motion there, but that's not what the motion is going to be. So a couple of things. Getting the, I'm getting the colors. I'm just working with with our First Nations community out here to get the colors. And I'm just going to run it by Todd to get that bench done when we have those appropriate colors for. And so the motion was for council to put money towards history, Mi'kmaq History Month. But you know what, I'm going to, I'm just going to do that out of our, out of my mayor's fund? Do I have any left, Deputy Mayor? Okay, thank you. He spends it, I don't, but that's good. It's going, all going to a good cause. So I'm going, I'm going to do that and I don't, I don't really need permission. But I just, what is happening is October is Mi'kmaq History Month. I'm just working with with the First Nations community here to put together an event that will be held in Frost Park with social distancing, the whole piece. And we did, Counselor Steve, really quickly, Black History Month. That was really quickly done. And that included food, renting, the grand hotel and everything. Here, we're going to do it outside and there won't be food really because I don't think we can serve, can't serve. So it'll be relatively simple, but they will put something together. And there's funding from that provincewide. So I think we're good on that one. I just wanted to add it just in case. We good on that, folks? Okay. Reports, council advisory committees. CAO, no CAOs, he's just pretending he's Counselor Hood tonight with his light on. It's the desk, that's it. That's it, we just figured it out. Cliff? We just figured it out, he had his light on. It's got nothing to do with you always having your light on, it's that seat. Right?
Yeah.
Go ahead there, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. I make a motion that council allocate a capital budget of 25,000, probably up to 25,000 for hard court repairs of social tenure school.
Seconded by Counselor Dawn. Any discussion on that? Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that council convert Jenkin Street to a one-way traffic main to water.
Moved, nope. Deputy moves it? Okay, yeah. Seconded by Counselor Hood. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that council direct staff to investigate a drinking water fountain at the skate park.
Seconded by Counselor Steve. Any? Yeah. Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that council remove the names of the mover and the secondar from official minutes going forward.
Seconded by Counselor Dawn. Well, it's the right thing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Your worship, I move that council direct a town solicitor to investigate a solution that addresses boarded-up properties with a specific timeframe that can be enforced through the Dangerous and Unsightly Bylaw or Municipal Government Act.
Counselor Dawn, seconded? Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Yeah, your worship, remove the council grant $2,500 to the Yarmouth Events Association for a note door concert at the Coal Shed.
Because, seconded by Counselor Hood. Can I, I'm just going to say this. I I know I'm, I know I'm going to get defeated, but I'm going to say it. If, and I say this with the utmost respect, it's not about about who applied. When people follow procedure and they apply for grants in February or March, we have roughly 400% more requests than we do money. The people that apply for grants on time and within the process get roughly, sometimes half, maybe not even that, what they're asking for. It would appear that when you apply for a grant outside of that, you get the whole amount. That's wrong. And we need to fix that. So I would, even if we just gave 2,000, I would probably be happy. But I know I'm going to get defeated, but I'm just saying. We got to get to a point where we we either follow the procedures or everybody will apply late because you know, every single time someone applies late, we just say, give it to them. And that's, we got to figure that out.
Yeah, and your worship, if I can speak to it, I know over the last several years, we've had this discussion numerous times, especially when it comes to grants to organizations. It seems sometimes when you come a little later, you do get a fuller amount than what what other people requested. But I think this year, Counselor Hood said it really well earlier and and the CAO alluded to it about the COVID situation. I think this was something that if we would have had a regular business-like approach, a regular summer season, this request wouldn't have come. This, they would have, they would have followed the same thing. The Coal Shed would have encapsulated a lot of what happened. And and they had to cancel because of the social distancing and bringing a thing together with the people down there on the waterfront. And I think a group has stepped up to try something outside that that regular stuff. So I think this is, this is might be an extenuating circumstance, but it's a problem that we've had the last seven or eight years. We've talked about it every year when it comes to grant time. And I think this is a one-off. If it if it goes well, and I know it will, we'll have to carve it out of other money that goes to to other events on the waterfront. But I think this is a one-off. Let them see what happens, let's see how it works. And I have no problem with the amount. We have to try something to entice some people in our downtown core and into our local area. And they will spend some money in the in the restaurants and the bars around. So let's see how it works. I have no problem with the amount and I will support the motion. But I see your side of the equation 100%.
I'll support it. I I just, we need to, we need to lay some rules down. Counselor Hood?
So, your worship, I initially voted against this at committee of the whole. But I I I realized that Counselor Cleveland had brought it forward. And I reached out to Counselor Cleveland over the weekend about it. I was concerned about it, frankly. And today, I went and met with Mr., with Rick Allright and spent some time with him. And as a result of that, I was convinced that this thing has merit. It's a COVID-related thing and that's what gets it around those other hurdles. I did, though, say to him, and he's running the Chamber of Commerce now, we need to have a decent relationship with them as well.
And we do.
I did say to him that, I asked him, had he, why didn't he or had he solicited the municipality? And he indicated, no, we didn't. We took, we took a position that it was all in town and maybe we were wrong in doing that. And I said, well, look, I'm going to support support it. So I don't know what council will do, but in the future, if this comes up, at least ask for it. And then when we're as a council sitting, we'll understand that you tried. And then we'll have to make a decision on whether we want to go it alone. I'm prepared to go it alone and that's why I seconded the motion. And, your worship, I felt strongly at committee of the whole for the reasons that you do and I still do. But I think that there are some people waiting on this decision tonight, frankly, to make a small bit of income and provide entertainment for people in the community. And so I think it's worthy of going forward. Thank you, Wade, for bringing it forward in the first instance.
Good. All right. Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? I voted for it. Just need, we just need to be careful. Okay. Planning advisory? Did you have something, Counselor Jim?
Yes, your worship.
Oh, there it is.
I move to give first reading to the swimming pool enclosure bylaw as outlined in our planner's report and that the date under section 4.5 of the bylaw be updated to the date of adoption. Thanks. Your worship, this is the staff upstairs. Joanne's been getting several requests about swimming pools and the protection they are, that they need to offer, make sure they're safe for everybody. So so and it's part of the bylaws that that we're going through, as Jeff does on a regular basis with us, too.
Good. Anybody else? Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. Thank you, Counselor Jim. You're late. That's okay. All right, reports for information. Any questions for committee chairs? Are we good? All right, additions, seniors. Go ahead there, Counselor Steve.
In talking to some seniors around with the election coming up, there's just some concern if there's going to be support from elections Nova Scotia. I know they sent people out during the by-election to support our seniors. And given that it's COVID and whatnot, they're just concerned if there'll, if there'll be anything, if there'll be a kiosk here that some people are offering. And during the by-election, there were some complaints that it wasn't overly advertised well. So some seniors feel like they didn't get the support. They kind of need it for the online thing. So just looking out for, you know, those people with this coming up. If we can kind of be proactive to it, it would be better if we could.
Go ahead, CAO. Go ahead, CAO.
So, your worship, this is our fourth fully electronic voting experience. When we began that a couple of general elections ago, we anticipated that, that seniors would, particularly those in, in, in homes, group homes or seniors' homes, may need assistance and may not have access, readily access to technology. And so, we had some, some staff, some temporary staff, election staff, visit the homes on a schedule with, coordinated with staff, went around with devices and assisted the, the seniors in, in exercising their right to vote. This time, and that worked very well. This time, it's a little different. We don't feel like we'll be able to do that because of COVID-19 and restrictions there. We do know that the province has provided iPads to seniors' homes because over the last few months, their contact with families has been fairly limited. And that was seen, that was seen by the province to be one way to allow them to have contact communication with family and friends. So, those devices exist in the homes. You know, our, our election returning officer is concerned about this issue. He and I spoke yesterday about a, a poll downstairs. In the past, during the electronic elections, on Election Day, we would have telephone and computer voting in this building. His idea this year is to extend that through the entire advanced polling period and Election Day to broaden that opportunity. I think that's a good, a good idea. And so, now he's got to work through the, the process and set it up so that people can maintain physical distancing, both while they're voting, but as they're waiting to vote and going through a line and so on, and do it comfortably. So, that may, may mean chairs set out in a line for people to, to wait and, and to advance. That might be difficult because do you take your chair with you or do you just keep hopscotch and chair to chair? We'll figure it out. It's a work in progress. As far as the seniors' homes go, coming back to that, our returning officer will do our best to, to see what we can do to, to assist in, in that process. But these are different and challenging times. So, as far as the advertising of the election, there are 22 candidates on the ballot who want people to vote. So, I, I, we will do our part. And Mike has already started to, to build awareness. But I think people who, who haven't cast a ballot, their, their name is available to people using the app who are running for council. And, and they might get a nudge or 18 to, to cast their ballot. So, I don't worry, and maybe I'm wrong, councillor, but I don't worry too much about the awareness because I think there are enough people who have a vested interest in people getting the vote out that, that the work that Mike does will, will, will supplement that. But I think people will be well aware there's an election coming up in October. And if you have ideas about things that we can do, look, this is our first time through COVID-19 and election. So, if you have ideas, people are suggesting to you, gee, it would be great if I was able to vote this way or that way. No idea is a bad idea. We'll take a look at it. And if, if there's something we can do to, to enhance people's access to the vote, we'll consider it.
Good, thank you. Good, councillor? Okay, and bicycles. So, we have the draft letter of support for Bicycle Nova Scotia's Complete Active Transportation Network for Nova Scotia. Did you want to speak to that, CAO, or did you? Huh, we, I think we... Yeah, Natalie sent this. So, basically, she's looking for us to approve this. So, it's basically, we're sending the, the letter to the minister to support of the proposal for the developed, that was developed by Bicycle Nova Scotia under the Department of Energy and Mines, funding for ICIP climate change funding. Councillor, councillor Cliff?
The bottom of the letter troubles me a little bit. "I have also attached a copy of the complete AT network plan, which we ask that you please keep confidential for the time being." What's that all about? They're asking us to support something that we're asked to keep confidential? We don't have the copy, by the way.
No, I don't.
The attached copy.
Go ahead, CAO.
So, your worship, if I understand, this letter is a draft that we would be sending to Minister Maubriquette in support of something that Bicycle Nova Scotia is proposing. So, it is us asking the minister to keep, somebody else's plan confidential. And we shouldn't have a problem with that since we haven't seen it ourselves.
Or if, if they haven't sent the attachment.
But we haven't seen it, so...
We haven't seen it.
Okay. Sorry for being this way, guys, but I get paid to do this stuff in my private life, so just ask it.
Listen, let me just tell you, councillor, that's why you're at this table. Because you notice these things. It's called a brilliant legal mind, and we appreciate it. That, too. Well, okay, motion made. Seconded by councillor Dawn. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of invoices. Moved. Seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Dex, date, oh, gosh, date of next meeting. We're not having another one because Phil can't go.
Question for the CAO, though. What about the, do we ever commit to the whole after the election?
That's a great question, something we never usually talk about ahead of the election. It just doesn't occur to me until it's Election Day, and then you realize. So, the next Committee of the Whole meeting, the October Committee of the Whole meeting, I should say, occurs about a week after the election. And the new council is not sworn in. Now, anybody who's returned to council would still be a sitting councillor and could meet in an emergency. What we've typically done after an election is we, we, we forego that meeting. I met with, with the newly elected and re-elected. And we talk about orientation kind of stuff for councils, sort of nuts and bolts of, of how we're going to work and how things go, how a meeting works, how you get sworn in, all that. So, we'll do that. Any of you and all of you that are returned, you know, I'll be looking for your support to, to welcome at least one new person to the table. And, you know, start off on the right foot with, with the team. So, to answer your question, we'll probably forego that Committee of the Whole meeting unless there's something of an emergency nature that, in consultation with her worship, she feels that we need to, need to meet before the new council's sworn in. The alternative to that, if it was a real emergency, then maybe the new council should be sworn in early to, to take the reins. So, we'll play it by ear, but I don't expect we'll have that Committee of the Whole meeting.
We're done at the end camera. Nothing more, so a motion to adjourn. Good, thanks, folks. The date of next meeting? Lindsay, is the date, the ninth? The eighth? October the eighth is our next meeting. After which, we will, yeah. Yes.